As I am. So let me know, what are you looking forward to? To attain from today's session? Why did you join? What are your expectations? Uh, I'll be happy to read your inputs. I'll be happy to read your inputs before we get our speakers. To join us. Hi Nelson, welcome. Let, let me know. If it's your first time, please uh, let us know. You know, where are you from? Where are you logging in from? And uh, what are you looking forward to achieve? Or to learn from today's session? Or what, you know, what got you to join the session? Things like that. That would be great to hear. If it's your first time, let me know. I am seeing um, familiar names. I'm seeing Caroline, Winnie. Uh, great Nelson, of course. Okay, okay. Let me read from the chats, please. Let's engage. Let's engage. Are you guys excited? Are you guys excited? What are you looking forward to experience from today's session? We're going to talk about work ethics. So I know we have been covering a lot on how to prepare for your job application process. And you know, we thought to have this special session that kinds of prepares you uh, to maintain that job that you will land at some point, because that is what will keep you there. Okay, you get the skills. Um, to apply, to stand out, to get into that job. But you need to be equipped, you need to be informed, you need to set yourself right to maintain or to grow through that role in that workplace. So it's very important, even before you get into that uh, place or platform, you get to be knowledgeable about all this. What is required of you? What do you need to do? Okay, so welcome everybody. Um, you're not saying anything. Uh, let me know how you are doing. If it's your first time, please let us know. Uh. Why did you join the session? Why, why, what are you looking forward to gain? What are you looking forward to experience from this session? And I'll be happy to read from you before I introduce our speaker in the next minute. Agatha says, I was inspired to do this session. I expect to gather new knowledge on job competitive market and how to be a competitive candidate in order to secure my dream career job. Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. All right, Maduhu Karibu, welcome. Uh, okay, okay. So let me now take this opportunity to welcome Zax Itoto all the way from Nigeria, and he has a great profile, great experience um, in employability skills, in human resource management, training and uh, learning development. So he is going to pour his experience, his insights in this area of work ethics, and I hope we're as excited as I am right now. So please drum rolls, everybody, drum rolls. I, I'm not sensing sick, you know, I'm not sensing the excitement today. Uh, from the chats, from you guys, your videos are off. What's happening today? Are we excited? All right. Thank you patience. Thank you patience. Sending, sending some flowers, yeah? Some bucket of flowers to, to, to our facilitator of the day. So please uh, round of applause, drum rolls, as I welcome uh, Zax Itoto, welcome, and the flow is yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Felicia. How are you doing?
I am doing great. I'm doing so great.
Thank you for putting this together. I mean, this is awesome. Everything here is great. I, I hope, I hope we are all um, have been gaining value from this program from day one, all the facilitators, all the topic. Hi everyone. So I, I, I won't be able to say hi to everybody, but I mean, Caroline, Jacqueline, Jacqueline was the first person here today, actually. She would get. I'm giving her a round of applause, Jacqueline. Agatha, Harriet, Agnes, Nelson, Selassie, Winnie, Amina, Damiela. All right, so these are the much that I can take so that we can get into it almost immediately. Um, we do not have time. Um, so we'll just get into it, okay? If that's fine. So I'm gonna share my screen. So we're gonna be doing a lot of um, back and forth. Yeah, you're welcome Jacqueline. So we're gonna be doing a lot of back and forth, right? So I, I want feedback. I'm gonna be asking certain questions, so you can use the chat box. Uh, someone can help me when I start to share. I may not be able to engage uh, with the chat box as much as I would want. Is that fine?
Sure, sure.
Awesome, awesome. Awesome. So I'm gonna share my screen now. And I hope everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be doing more from me sharing my screen and all of that, okay? Okay, so.
But we, I think we're seeing a fo- like a folder. Not a presentation, is.
Can see the presentation?
Yeah, not yet.
Really?
Yes.
Oh wow, and I could see it from him. Uh, okay. And now how about now?
So maybe you can stop sharing. And then uh, try, try again to share screen. If, if, is the presentation in like full mode? Full presentation mode?
No, it's not.
Okay, so maybe you try to share screen and then, uh, yeah, there, there it is.
You, you can see it now?
Yeah, yeah, can see clearly.
Okay. So let's, let's get into it. Ethics and professionalism in the workplace. So I mean, we've been talking.
Sorry, Zax. Um, I think you can also put it now in full mode so that it can look nicely.
Can you still see it?
Yeah, yeah, perfectly. That's, that's great.
Great. Can everybody see? Confirm you can see my screen? Confirm you can see my screen?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great, great, great. Okay, so the career journey is in two phases. Or three phases, I would say. So there is the path where before the job, there was the path where is on the job, and there is the path where is after the job. Okay, so everything that you've learned before now has been before the job. So how to get the job, the CV, the interview and all of that. So you are gonna get the job. Now, when you get the job, there are second things that you need to do on the job that will keep you on the job and then help you to grow on the job. So that's what I'm gonna be focusing on today. And it's gonna be short, it's gonna be brief, it's just gonna be points, points, bullet points, and very simple. So what I'm gonna be talking about today, it's gonna be very, very simple, right? But highly applicable. All right, so a little bit about me, I'm not gonna waste time about me. You can screenshot that, because I'm not really gonna talk about all of this, right? I'm a coach, I'm a certified career coach. I'm in human resource management. Um, I'm a learning and development um consultant. And then I founded a model called the Escape Model. So the Escape Model is a career model that helps people who want to transition from the school environment into the work environment. So basically, something like this program you're running now is what the Escape Model does. So you skip all of that. That's my page on Facebook, that's my LinkedIn handle, that's my IG, um, Instagram, and that's my personal Facebook, and that's our website. So um, I'm more active on LinkedIn and the Facebook page. So you can go there, um, read about me, check everything you wanna check about me so that I don't waste time on that. Is that fine? Right, so let me get into the business of the day now. So what is our learning goal? We wanna learn how you can develop a strong work ethic. Right, that will impact your future as an employee within that organization. So how would you grow? Majorly, we're saying, how would you grow? How would you become um, the best? How would you move? How would you transition? How would you rise within that sector that you find yourself? Now, this is what we wanna talk about. So this is gonna be our learning goal, right? The importance of developing a strong work ethic and how the work ethic you develop will impact your future. Now, realize that um, every place you find yourself is an opportunity for you to learn and grow. If you're not growing, you're dead. Right? So we need to grow within that space where we find ourselves. So moving fast, what is ethics? So it came, it comes from a group word known as ethos. Right? I'm gonna share this slide, so you don't have to, to copy. You don't have to waste time trying to copy and um, write. Right? So I'm, I'll share this slide, so you, you'd, you'd get it. Now ethos is a great word, right? And ethos means a characteristic spirit of culture. That is what ethos means. So it means that ethics is actually a spirit. And what, when you say something is a spirit, that means it is a life. It is something that is living. It is something that you can actually um, 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 relate with. That is what ethos means, right? Now from that word ethos comes the word ethics. Now, is a set of rules standard that will govern conduct? Every organization, every company, every um, tradition, every country, every state have what they call an ethical code of conduct. That is what will guide every person that is going to operate within that environment as per what is right and what is wrong. Otherwise, what you're gonna have is people living as they want, doing things as they like. Now, you can come to an organization and do things the way you think it is right. Right? So that means we would have varying standards if we allow that to happen. There is going to be varied standard. So what is right to you may not be right to me. What is right to someone else may not be right to the other person. So we have various definition of wrong and right. And we just cannot allow that to happen, because it's going to lead to what you call a breakdown in law and order. So that is why we must have ethics. So ethics is there to guide us. Ethic is there to tell us, hey, you're going the wrong path. Ethic is there to teach us, to guide us, to tell us, this is what you should do. Right? Now, why are we having this conversation? Workplace ethics, why? Now, for you as a person, as you are going to see as we progress, it is your ethics that is going to help you to grow in that system. It is the level of ethics that you possess that will help you to grow within the system where you find yourself. So the point is, if you come into a place and um, your work ethics is very, very poor, you have a very poor work ethics, and um, you, you, you don't, you don't align to the values or the system of that place. Chances are, the organization will soon drop you. They'll feel like, okay, this person is not going where we're going. So your why is not strong enough. And one thing you must always know is that in a workplace, there is something called an alignment. So what I mean is your expectation as an employee must be properly aligned to the objective of that organizations. Now, more often than not, organizations derive their objectives from their values. So the organization has a value system, it has a value system from where it derives objective, and it says, this is what we wanna do, and this is why we want to do this. Right? So um, we wanna serve, we wanna help five hundred women per year to become financially stable. That is your why, and this is how we are going to do it. So what I mean is if you cannot find yourself within that objective of that organization, it means that as an individual, you are not in alignment with the values of that place. So you're going to be in constant contradiction of that place. You will find it hard to grow. You will find it hard to write. If you don't believe that, oh, we should empower five hundred women for free. If you believe that, oh, they must pay me. So that is, that is your personal value. Or if the organization says, no, we have to do this thing for free, it means that you are not in tandem with that organization. So what it means that you're gonna be left off, you're going to be dropped from the bandwagon. So this is why your ethics must be strong. So it can stimulate a positive employee behavior that will how I put it now, is there's something, there's a way I wanna put it so that you understand. Okay, there's something called transferable skills. So transferable skills are generic skills, right? So it means that on every job room, you can have these skills. These skills are very, very relevant. Whether you are in admin, whether you're in accounts and all of that, you can transfer these skills across industries. Now, your strong ethic is gonna help you to develop a wider range of these skills, making you more employable. The reverse will be the case if you do not have a strong work ethic. So that means you're gonna have a poor work ethic. That means you're gonna have lower transferable skills. So as time goes on, it's gonna make you unemployable. Now, it is dangerous for you to get a job without strong ethics. Because when you're going to get a reference from that place, if your work ethics was not strong in that place, it simply means that your employer, your HR, the people that were there are gonna have a negative remark about you. So if you're going to the new place now, they are going to negatively, they'll have a negative scorecard of you, which will impact upon you. And very soon, you will find out that you are unemployable. Because no organization wants to work with someone that has a poor work ethic. They don't want to. So they're like, oh no, if they see the scorecard, oh, this is the reference? No, I don't wanna be involved with this person. I don't wanna be involved with this person. And that is why you must develop, you must consciously develop a strong work ethic. So I know that there is this Gen Z team growing on now, and they're like, no, where the Gen Z's? No. You must not allow that wave to get into you. So we see a lot of all of these things on social media, we get caught up in it. And sometimes we do not know that these things have an impact. No, you must not get caught up in the wave of the moment. So you must, the, the, the culture, the tradition that is the fifteen of someone who is going to work in an organization, you must imbibe those traditions. Okay, I hope somebody is following me, because I'm still laying a foundation, right? So that when I start, we will move very, very fast. Now, what are some of the ethical goals? And what are some of the ethical goals? What are some of the things that are, um, are, are, are embedded in ethics? Integrity, number one is integrity, right? So um, I would hire anybody who has high integrity over skills any day, right? Because skills can be taught. So when you're talented, for example, you're very talented, you can do your work very well. So that means they've hired you in the organization, meaning you're very talented. But if you don't have integrity, that means every single time we wanna commit a project or wanna commit something to you, maybe want to commit funds to you for a particular project, we are not sure about how you are going to execute it. So that means there is always, you always give an excuse why the funds are short. It simply means you lack integrity. So what is gonna happen is that you're gonna start getting less and less responsibility as time goes by. So we hire people with integrity any day, anytime. People with integrity any day, anytime will rise faster than people without it. Number two, values. I talked about values just now. Values are like the most important thing that anybody can have. And they're most, as a person, what are your values? So what do you stand for? Those are the things that are going to form the block of your ethics. Your ethical scan. Because someone who does not have values will have poor work ethics. Because it is your values that will initiate, it's your values that will impact upon your ethics. So in the workplace, there is, there are, there are people we call intrapremiers. Please take note of this, it's not in the slides. So I'll just be seeing one or two of these things that I know is there. So an intrapremier, right? And then you have employee. You don't wanna be just an employee, you want to be an intrapremier. So who is an intrapremier? An intrapremier is an employee that has the mindset, that is carrying the value of an intrapremier. So he's acting like an owner. So he sees the business like his own. So he cannot take any random decision or just do anything that is going to negatively impact upon the organization because of the values he carries. That is what will form his ethics for work. Morality. You know what morals are? Our moral compass. How do your moral compass tilt? Trustworthiness. In the workplace, the people we commit more projects to, remember, the people that we grow within an organization are the people that are going to carry out more responsibilities. And before you will carry out more responsibilities, it simply means that the organization trusts you enough before they will give you more responsibilities to carry out. Because it is in execution of responsibilities that you will rise, that you will grow. So the more responsibility you carry, the more responsible you are, the more quicker you will rise in the system. And you can only carry out responsibilities when you are trustworthy. Respect. You don't come into the workplace, a lot of people have this problem, oh, I am forty, this person is thirty, I'm senior to them. But they are your head of departments. You gotta respect everybody within the workplace, up, middle, down. Reciprocally. Careful people. Be a good citizen of your country, of that organization, and be fair in your dealing. I hope I am not rushing. I hope, I hope you're following me. I hope everybody's following me. I hope I'm not losing you. So, so on, on the comment section, on the comment section, I want each and every one of you to comment, what is your greatest value? Like, what is the value you hold in dear esteem? Just put it there, whatever it is, whatever it is, is it integrity? Whatever value you hold the most, put it on the comment section. Just put it, just one minute. Let me just know that you're following me. And if you don't have one, if you don't have a value yet, just tell us, I've not found the value yet. So we'll help you to find one today, okay? Just put your mo- I, I, I can't see it, but I believe that it's there.
Um, I can help, I can help read it. So Damiela says integrity, patience, integrity, accountability, Daniel, Emmanuel, hard work, work ethics, um, Dafunda, Dafuda, eh, Dafuda. Jacqueline, integrity, trustworthiness, Selassie, Dorothy, trustworthy.
Awesome, awesome.
Honesty, justice, grace, and Nelson.
Awesome. These are, these are awesome values, you know? For people that said integrity, hard work, honesty, trustworthiness, and these are awesome values. Now, in specific terms, right? In specific terms, work ethic is about what is morally correct, honorable, and acceptable to the larger majority. So it is not about I think this is right. No, it's not a question of what you think, it is a question of what is acceptable. Now, let me say this, and let me say this very loud and clear. When you go to an organization, it's going to be a different environment. It's gonna be different from what you're used to. So maybe at home, you are used to getting your way. Maybe you're used to, you know, getting what you want to happen. When you come into an organization, it's not gonna be like that, because the organization is guided by what you call policies. Right? And they expect you to abide by these policies. So it is different from organization A, Mimi Nani has its own ethical code of conduct. For Mimi Nani. Prenium Consulting, my own company has its own. Now, all of our ethics comes out of our values as an organization. And by default, it stems out of the value of the owner, whoever is the founder, whoever is the leader, whoever is the visionary. Most often than not, their personal values become values within the organization, and that is what cascades down. So you see why having a good work ethic is very, very important, even outside working for somebody. The day you are going to own your own company, if you do not have a strong work ethic, nothing worth having comes easy. The way you treat somebody else is the way you behave in somebody else is the way people react to you. So if you have not built a strong work ethics, when you decide to open your own company, your own business, to seep into it, and you have a problem. But I know none of us here is going to fall into that. Now, professionalism, the, 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 the ideal way, the ideal thing for us is to be professionals. Exhibiting what you call a cautious, conscientious business life. So when you come into an organization, you act like a business person. You're there for serious business. You're not there to play, you're not there to joke around. Right? So let me move on. Let's get into ethics. Real ethics. Now, if you look at my screen, I hope you can still look at my screen. These are the ten things I'm just gonna be talking about. If you can, if you can sort these ten things out as a person within a system, if you can sort these ten things out, like I said, they are simple. They're simple, they're not complex. But these are the things that a lot of people within the workplace have issues with. These things are the major problems. And these are what the ethics within an organization, most policies within an organization revolve around this. And the first thing is attendance. Number two, character, teamwork, appearance, attitude, productivity, organizational skills, communication, cooperation, and respect. Now, attendance is the major thing, is the first thing, because you gotta show up. You gotta be there. You, you, you have, you have to be there. So I don't, an organization does not wanna hire you. And this is where we have problem with a lot of people. They always wanna be away from work. Everyone's be on time, don't be absent. So you, you see people who come to work very late, all the time. It's a problem. They can't make time. So the work is eight to five. Person is not at work eight thirty. And then they always has an excuse why he's late, he or she is late to work. Let me tell you what happens. The organization is taking note of you. Every day. So every single time, an organization has a register where they keep who are the people that are punctual and regular. Two things, punctual and regular. Punctual means on time, regular means always available. So the point is, whenever there is going to be promotion, whenever there is going to be bonus and benefits, whenever there is going to be overtime, it is the people that are always around that are going to benefit from this. Because one thing that we also calculate, we also calculate what you call attendance policy. Now, for you to build a strong ethic, your time, you have to be someone that respects time a lot. Now, there is something, there is a very bad tag that we have as Africans. You guys are, you guys are Africans too. I'm an African. There is a bad tag that the white people have given to us, and it's called African time. I don't know who knows about African time. Have you ever heard about the concept, African time before? Okay, yes, I can see Damiela nodding his head. Yes, there is something called Af- there is something called African time. Another African time means if you tell an African person to be here at eight o'clock. So don't bother going nearby. It's a good idea, it takes you, because it is acceptable in Africa for us to not keep to time. And that is a wrong concept. Because when you tell the British man, eight o'clock, eight o'clock on the dot, he's there. He's there. Now, the reason why a lot of people cannot keep to time is poor lifestyle ethics. So you watch TV into the night, the previous day, you do a lot of things that make you sleep late, and then you wake up late. So you cannot track your time. You are unable to keep to time because of poor timing habits. So when you get a job, there is a time to wake up, there is a time to sleep. So when you get a job, there is a time to wake up, there is a time to sleep. And it is not about, I am feeling sleepy, no, it is, it is time to sleep. So it means you have calculated as a person, I don't wanna go down deep, as a person. You ought to know how long you'd sleep. Some people sleep for six hours, some people, you need to track your sleep time. Right? And then set your timer and your alarm. I always tell people, I still use alarms today, I still use phone alarm. Till your body now gets used to it. Set your alarm and everything, know all the activities that go in your morning routine, right? So that you know when to, okay, I use two hours to get set on my morning routine, two hours. Right? This is how long it takes me from my house to my office by, by car. If I'm walking, this is how long, so that you be on time at work. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to overflow that one. Be at work every day possible. If you're going to be away from work, plan it, inform your employers beforehand. Tell them, for example today, I am going to leave work about three hours earlier, my, my employer is away. Don't abuse leave. So some people go and leave, okay, let me give you this scenario. So somebody in my office took excuse for leave, I said he was going to write an exam, right? Now, we granted you leave, then we now saw him on Wa- on his WhatsApp status. We saw him in the pool. He, he was posting pictures of his WhatsApp status, he was in a pool, they were doing a pool party. With his friends. And he posted it on WhatsApp status. Now. I mean, I, I, I hear we're looking at his WhatsApp status, seeing this guy jumping up and down, that is an abuse of leave time. The punch out to work every day, right? So you don't, you don't, you don't go and lie and say, oh, I'm going to do this, and you know you are not going to do it. That is a poor work ethic. Number two, right? So I think we got that one very well, so I don't want, number two, character. Your character, the kind of character that you keep. So what is the character? Right? Now, character is something that you cannot buy, you can't buy it. See, that is good or it's bad, right? Now, somebody said a good character is more dependable than talent and skills. A good character, be dependable, what that means is. When we come to you as an organization, you are an ambassador of that organization. You are not the staff that talks bad about your organization, even if your organization. Is, you feel is not what it should be. There is no organization that is perfect, let me let you know, no organization, even the Microsoft. Yeah, please, um, um, Felicia, please notify me of my timings, once it's getting close, let me know, please.
Okay, okay.
Right.
So we are thirty-five past, thirty-five minutes past.
Alright, that's right. So, be loyal, look, look, let me, let me give you a secret. There is nothing an organizational wants, like loyalty, an organizational wants, people's staff that will stand by it. That's what an organization wants, loyalty, loyal staff, a staff that will. Say, this is my organization and I'm proud to be called this. The organization, because at the end of the day, the organization is an entity, and you absorb that. And you have no business being in an organization that you are not proud of. You have no business being there. Right? So I'll leave that. Number three, teamwork. Ha. Look. If you are not a team player, go and learn it. This is one of the highest ethics within an organization. This is one of the highest ethical value. Let me tell you the reason why. The reason why is because. The organization is comprised of different people from different backgrounds, coming from different places to achieve one objective. One goal, one vision. So you must work with people in that organization. There is somebody that you be paired with. So somebody will say, I don't like dark people. I don't like light-skinned people. You must like them. When you're in the organization, you know why? Because you will spend more of your time with the people in your organization than even in your personal life, I hope you know. You, you spend more time at work. So the earlier, and the, the team is together, everyone achieves more. I have one video somewhere that I, I was going to show us about what teamwork can achieve. Now, the best team players, let me tell you why, the best team player, that the, the people that have the highest teamwork ethics. Are part of the people that will go far. Why? Because you can work with everybody within that organization, you can work with everybody, everybody can work with you. So they find it easy to come to you, they find it easy to share with you, they find it easy to relate with you. Now, let me tell you a secret. Every organization, the key to your rising. Is in the relationships that you build there. That's the key to your rising. Because at the end of the day, there usually is a closed-door meeting. So management, senior management, top management, they have this closed-door meeting where they talk about every staff. So when they want to do end of the year promotion and look at, yeah, it's ending now. So you have one month, one month to start to develop some of these things. Now, because when they are in this closed-door meeting, it is. The character, how well of a team player you are. Because when they start to, when they mention your name, Ayuba, when they mention your name, Agatha, Makubo, what about her? You must have people that will speak in your defense, as ah, yes, ah. But if you are not a team player, these people will not speak for you. They're gonna say, oh no, she's rude. Oh no, he's like, he's like that. You have lost that opportunity, because the CEO does not know everybody personally. Doesn't everybody personally? So it is the relationships that you build with your colleagues, and that is where teamwork comes to play. Let me not overflow that. Be a team player, that's everything I have said. And part of being a team player is be a contributing member. There's a project, there is something they are talking about, contribute your quota, right? Accept compromise, you must not always want to be right, this thing kills people a lot. You want to be right all the time. No, sometimes you have to compromise, right, in the team. And then, okay, look at another person's perspective and point of view. Appearance. I can't, I cannot stress this, you know, let me, let me give you a story, let me tell you a story. So I had a lady. About, I had a lady sometime last month, right? The first day, I hired her for a sales officer role. The first day this lady came to the office, she was wearing a bomb shorts. Hope you all know what a bomb shot means. Eh, eh, Damila, you will know, you are. She was wearing a bomb shorts and the shirt, and the white sneakers. And I asked a question, why are you dressed like this? She was like, um. Uh, yeah, this is, I, I think this is okay. I'm like, okay, why do you think it's okay? She said, I feel this is corporate enough. Like, how? So we want people that are going to abide by our dress code standard. We don't want people that will just dress anyhow. You gotta dress for success. So how do you wear a bomb shot to an organization? And I mean, it's not, it's not a pool party. Right? It's not, it's not a party, it's a place of business. So guys, you gotta shave daily. Do not use strong perfumes, these are ethics for work. Ladies, you cannot wear revealing clothes. Things like tattoo, all these body piercings, I see, it, it, it's a trend, it's a trend. So except you are in that industry, maybe you're in the entertainment industry, you are in the music industry, movies, sports and all of that. Then, that is, this program is not for, if you are in, in, in that, then fine. But if you are gonna work in an organization, if you're gonna grow within a system and an organization. You gotta abide by, you cannot come and tell us how you want to dress. You can't, because we're not going to take it. You cannot plait your hair as a guy and wear earring and come to the office and expect that we'll take it. And you tell us that I'm a Gen Z. No, the owner of the company may not be a Gen Z. Remember that you are representative of the organization, how you dress is how they will see the organization. So always, always take note of your dressing every day you're going out. Your official colors are black and dark blue. Those are official dress colors, dark and dark blue. Please, ladies, be careful of heavy jewelries, heavy makeup. Look at this guy, look at this guy. Can you see my screen? Look at Sims. So Sims is a guy, we're, we're going to make reference to Sims every day. Look at the way Sims is dressed to walk. Ah, look at what he seems to you say, it's a casual Friday, okay, yes, we said it's casual Friday, it's not freaky Friday, Sims. You're wearing a singlet and armless to work with a, with a palm sandal and a shorts. Don't be a Sims. Somebody should put on the chat box, I will not be a Sims, right? There will not be a Sims. I will not be a Sims. Don't be a Sims. Because when you become Sims, it's gonna affect you, right? I will not be Sims. Alright, now talking about character, right? First impression will always last a lifetime, first impressions. First impressions, first impressions, first impressions. Now. I am going to share this slide, so I'm not going to go into, because of my time, I'm not going to go into the details of all of this. But these are just ethical codes of conduct, right? Maintaining good eye contact. Now, I'm only gonna pick one out of here, and that's the forum of your conversation. In the workplace, you should not be a loud talker. You shouldn't, you shouldn't speak so loud, like everybody hears you from every. Step of the reading, no, 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 you shouldn't speak so loud, okay? Maintain the volume, and then number two, avoid interruption. If you're the kind of person who does not know how to allow people to talk without interrupting them. You wanna check that. Why? Because you're, at the times that your CEO, your senior colleagues are gonna be talking to you, and you cannot interrupt them. Because they are seniors to you. If you do that, it impacts upon you negatively. Be a good listener. Listen more than you speak in the org- in an organization system. You wanna check that out, okay? So I will not dwell on this slide, right? Be positive. Bring a positive attitude to work every single day. You know why? It's going to make you have a vibrant energy, and you need a vibrant energy for you to be productive. So people wake up and say, I woke up on the wrong side of the bed this morning, what does that mean? You control your day, you control your day. So you don't wake up and say, ah. And then you now bring all of that negativity to work and project it on everybody. And then everybody that just sees you, your face is squeezed, people are not happy to see you. Your face is squeezed, and then everybody avoids you. What happens is that they don't wanna work with you for that day, and then your team. I'd like, no, no, I please, I beg, I don't want this person, no. So when you wake up, let me tell you a secret. One thing that can help you energize you is go for a run, go for a run, go for a walk. Go for a run, go for a walk. Put an earpiece in your ear and listen to a motivational talk. Like fearless energy five minutes, or put a very motivational song, music, wake up with music, that's after your prayers and all of that, and then boom. You get to work. So when you come into the office space, there should be that aura. People should realize that, okay, yeah. If, if Zachs comes, if Agatha comes, if Damila walks in, if Ayuba walks in. They should, they should feel it, they should feel that strong presence. Not when you come, everybody's, ah, they're scum again. And then everybody just goes into their, no. Okay, attract positive thoughts will generate positive feelings, and positive feelings will attract positive life experiences. That's how you grow, and every organization wants a positive staff. You don't want people that will just come and dull them. In Nigeria, we call it dull, dull. I don't know why you call it in, in your country, but us, we say, this person did dull us. So once he enters the place, the whole place is dull, right? Accept responsibility for your work. If you make a mistake, admit it. You're gonna make mistakes, right? Don't be dissatisfied all the time. You are the one that agreed, you are the one that collected the work. Why you always complaining every time, every time, every time? So you are building a reputation, a bad work ethic of being a company, and remember. What you do consistently becomes a reputation. So if we know that every time you come to HR office, you always complain, we'll start to avoid you. So even, even for us to do your evaluations and your performance reviews, we'll be like, no, let's just, let's just add some. Because we don't want to see you, because when you come into our office, you complain. You tell us how this car is not working, you tell us how you cannot go out. You tell us this and you tell us that. Take pride in your work, do the things you, the best you know how to. Let everybody see that you have put it down. Somebody said hard work as an ethic, that is hard work right there. To do it to the best. Don't be those people that'll be like, oh, well, don't try, I beg. Don't be the people that are always looking at the time. You know, they're still, they are looking at the time, they are waiting. Ah, almost. If I don't be a government worker, I don't know, I don't know your country. Where in my country, there's something they call government work. So there is a slogan, they say, now government work. So government work means nobody cares. Nobody cares about it. So what it simply means is, if it's government work, if it's government property, treat it anyhow. Don't be like that. Put on the chart, I will not be, I will not be a government, I'm not saying you not work in the government. Just say, I, I will not attend government work. Write it like that, I will not attend government work. Put it on the chart. You know, why, why, why I say you should put it on the chart is you are making affirmations. These are affirmations, so that you, it will be sinking into you, it's okay, no, you know. Now, so let me pause here, there is, I wanna show you a video, very one-minute video.
Um, just a reminder, forty-eight minutes passed, yeah?
Yeah, 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 I mean, time. So let me show you a video, one-minute video that encompasses everything. So, a- and I want you to see whether you are like any of these people I'm going to show you. So watch this video. I mean, let me show you this video of these guys. I'm going to, okay, I'm coming, so that I will also share my sound. Okay, my sound is shared already. Thank you to Baraka, who showed me how to do that today. Thank you, Baraka. I hope I got the name very well.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Zachs.
Yep.
But I think we're supposed to see the video, is it?
Oh, you can see it.
No, 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 we cannot see it. So maybe you, you might have to. To.
Let me play it again.
To share the, the screen as well, and as in, um, where it plays.
Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
You can't see my screen?
Not yet.
Okay, this is strange, Baraka. Baraka, we saw it earlier, right?
Yeah, yeah, it would be nice to do it earlier.
Yeah, so why is it not, well, you can, can you see it now?
So, so maybe you can.
How about now?
Yep.
You can see my screen now, right?
Yes.
Alright, so let me play it again. Alright, watch.
Okay, now, I think, because we don't have, we don't hear the sound. So if you can stop sharing, and then while you're about to share, there's a, there's somewhere you have to tick below. Where you have to select sharing sound.
I've shared my sound now.
Okay.
I just hope you are able to see. If we complete, then it's, it's okay. Are you, can you see my screen?
Hmm, now, no, not yet, not yet. Hope it's coming along.
How about now?
Coming, it's coming now. Yeah, so if we can start the video now.
Alright, so it's just, it's just a one-minute video, it's not long. I just wanna show us something. Alright, so let's go. Did you see those guys?
It's hilarious.
Now, this is, this is, thi- this is everything I'm talking about. Now, in every organization, you will see those people. That are eating on there, they always late, always late. See, the guy was even laughing, he knows, knows, always, always. So put, put, yeah, I will not be any of those guys. I will not be any of those guys. The ones that like to talk to women, the ones that like to gist and go see path, well, those are all examples of poor work ethics. That is what you, that, that is a poor work ethics, and especially the. That is what you, that, that is a poor work ethics, and especially the ones that are not, never on their seat, they're never on their table. That's so wrong, that's so wrong, they're always taking breaks, they're always, they're, they're always, if you call them, I'm on break. If you call them, I'm on break, they are always on break, right? Now, why are you eating on your table when you can pour soup on a document, and then you carry that document and run it to your CEO? Poor work ethics, right, now, as I round up. Communication is the strongest work ethic, the strongest, the strongest work ethic. Communication is the strongest work ethic you can build. Verbal communication, the ability for you to translate your thoughts to words, and the people can understand it very, very well. Listen carefully, strong communicators are going to rise faster within the organization, why? Because they know how to bring ideas to life and communicate it to people. You can see my screen, right, you can see my screen? Okay, great, great.
Yes, yes, we can.
Great, now, communication is two way, written and verbal. Why did I say communicators are going to rise faster within the system, because the ability, those people that can write good memos, good reports, now. The best, the quickest way for your CEO to judge your capabilities is through your reports. So even after this whole session. Of job acquiring skills, I will indulge you to go and learn how to write official memos, official reports. Official memos, how to present what you call a report, I don't know if it's part of the, the business regimen, I think it is, right? I think you've been taught, or you will be taught, now, those are aspects of communication, that is a very strong work ethic. Verbal communication, written communication. And then diversity in the workplace, understand that we all have various backgrounds, we come from different homes, you must respect everybody's cultural differences. You cannot say, oh, you're from here, I'm from here, no, 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 respect people's cultural differences. What are the traits of winning employee, as I round up, hard work, like somebody said, hard work. Carry out orders when they tell you to do things, do it. Of course, it's not everything, there's also something called ethical dilemma, ethical dilemma is if you are not being presented with something that goes against your values and your, what you believe and all of that, your why. Against, yeah, tho- those ones, if your boss says you should go and kill somebody, you don't need somebody to tell you that, that is wrong, that is a wrong, I mean. You will not say, oh, Mr. Zach said, I should do whatever they told me to do, so my boss said we should go and rob, they catch you. Carry out orders, show respects. To everyone irrespective of who they are, even if the person is a cleaner, the easiest way you can show respect to even the cleaner is know their names. And when you come to work, hey, Thomas, good morning, Thomas is a cleaner, but greet him as though he is a valuable guy, he's also a valuable, he's cleaning the ground and the tables for you. Okay, now, look at, look at seams, remember seams, that were guy, that's why I said, put it as, right? I will not be a seam, look at seams, seams has retired, early retirement, without telling anybody, seams has just, he's sleeping at work. Sleeping on his decks, on his table, look at, he's, he's laid out on his table, just chilling, and look, just chilling at work, and look at how everybody's looking at him. Okay, now, look at all his colleagues, they're looking at him, and they said, it's a rumor has it, that seams are thinking of early retirement. So this, that is who you will be, remember that your workplace are governed by conduct, laws, regulations, and policies, right? Now, finally, what will be the consequences? If you did not build all of these work ethics, what will happen to you, you're not going to be productive, there's gonna be a lack of productivity, and if you're not productive, if you're not productive, you cannot, you cannot produce results. If you cannot produce result, then you are not useful to the organization. Number two, it will affect your performance, your performance will start to drop, because the time you are, you are meant to be spending doing research and doing important things, you are talking to a woman in the office. No, no, just like that guy you saw in the video, talking to a woman, collecting phone number. See, that's poor, that's bad, number three is gonna stunt your career growth, you won't grow, and then it will give you a bad reputation, meaning. If I, if we fire you from an organization, and then you want your reference, I'm gonna tell the next person, this is how this person is, so, he should talk to women in the office, so if you want to hire him, fine. That's what the bad reputation is, and then to promote negative vibes, and you know, negative vibes can affect you, remember when we talked about negative vibes? It's gonna affect you very, very bad, you're not gonna be a positive employee, you're always gonna be a negative employee, and all of that, right? And then, my final slide, these are some characters of bad work ethics, look at it. Hostility towards management, frequent use of obscene words, crossing, swearing, you don't curse in the workplace, you don't swear. There are some language in Nigeria, we call it street, street slang, that's what we call it in Nigeria, I don't know what you. Call it over there, it's called street slang, sorry, my, my light just went off, but it will come back very soon, right, so you don't use street slang in the workplace. Swearing, obscene word, F word, no, 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 you don't use those kind of words, no, they're not professional, you don't gossip, spread rumors. You know, those kind of things, they are not good work ethics, um, um, you watch your language, your behavior, you don't give out jokes that demean people. Racial jokes, stereotype kind of jokes, no, you don't do that, and then you don't, you know, there are some things where you are making fun of people. These are all part of what you call bad work ethics, these are not the kind of ethics you want in your workplace. Whatever you do, just do it with your heart, do it as though you are doing it unto God. You find yourself in an organization, serve as though you are serving God, because you are actually serving God, your work is an extension of your purpose from God. So you are not working for that boss or that company, you're actually working for God, your creator, who made you, so by extension, it's going to reward you, so that is the mentality you should have. That place you are working is just a phase, it's just, you are just working in capacity, right? For that time, your real reward comes from God, so do it with all your heart, even if that place do not reward you, God is going to reward you. Thank you very much, Falicia, thank you, everybody for listening, I hope you got value out of this, thank you so, so, so much. And that's the end.
Thank you, um, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, great, great, so thank you so much, Azak, for a very interesting, it was a very quick, quick one. But it was, it was funny, it was educative, it was reminding, emphasizing, and I hope everybody was enjoying, uh, throughout, so thank you so much. Everybody, please, a round of applause, can we just, you know, say something, give a word to, to Zax, as we, um, maybe taking just, you know, a couple of questions. Uh, put in your comment, uh, your, your, you know, whatever that your remark, uh. Any, any point that, you know, has, has brought home to you today, maybe you're not good somewhere, or you.
We lost her.
Hello?
Okay, we lost you for a moment there, but you're back now.
Yeah, I hope, I hope it's not going to continue, I think this is the second time it just happened.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, let's hope it proceeds. Okay, so, um, I, I don't know if, I think I might, I might have missed out on the comments, because I'm no longer able to see them. Oh, I can see them, I can actually see them, okay, great, great, uh, Zax, I had some few, maybe not questions, rather, just to get some of your insights, because we. You know, these work ethics, not everybody goes to school to be prepared for this, you know, I think the only, uh, and people, when they land their jobs. Uh, maybe they have had internships, we call it, um, practical training when they're in university, so even when they go there, there's no manual, there is no guideline. And most of them don't go through like a basic orientation that basically touches on the work ethics, so it just touches on the main job, um, you know, things. And so, i- i- it's like, a lot of us are not groomed to have these ethics, and then the employers expect us to have them, you know? So, um, I think sessions like this are very important to kind of help us to prepare ourselves, but those who are already in the workplace, to evaluate ourselves and do more. Because sometimes, as you have said, your performance, your career growth is tied to, you know what? Your ethics are, but also your decision makers, how they can, you know, judge you and perceive you, and so we are kind of either discredit or. Uh, accrediting to our reputation with this, so it's very, very powerful session and very useful, and I hope our participants will take that on. And kind of invest in that on how we can be better at it, so I want us to, I want you to maybe enlighten us, whereby, people are kind of reluctant to change, you know, you might have these insights. And now, you know, it's, it's, you've talked about values and it's like the culture, but what happens where, you know, how to break that. Um, that reluctance to change, if, if you can just give your insights on that, so how do we overcome that? But also, I think also, we can also talk about also where, um, resources, I think some of the. I would say, I don't know, violation of ethics in the workplaces is how we kind of either mistreat or. Steal resources or misuse, including the time, sometimes, uh, properties, organizational properties, even from each other, you don't care, you feel like you are entitled to that. So maybe if you can just quickly address on those, and then we will, um, go on, if there are any questions from the, uh, from the chat before we close.
Okay, so, um, thank you, Falicia, thank you, alright, so the, the thing is, um, so change is not, eh. Is not, is not something that happens all at once, right, so change i- i- is gradual, right? Change is, um, something that holds you accountable, so the best way for people, you know, I could see, I could see from the sessions, I could see some people saying, I, I am, that's. This kind of person, you know, from the video, I am this kind of person, but I have seen it, you know, and, um. The, the first thing is to acknowledge, okay, um, this is where I am, this is where I need to be, now, if you have understood that, I am going to. If I don't change this thing, or if I don't develop this kind of ethic, this kind of character is gonna affect me, that is the first place. Now, the second place is to do what you call, um, habit creation, so you have to identify, for example, let me use time. Because it's usually easy for me to use, um, time as a, an example, so time, i- you can, you can quickly change that. Time by just infusing a very small habits, how do I mean? Just using, on your phone, there is something called calendar, I don't know how we, if we can see, but on your phone, there is something called a calendar here, right? So every time you go to this calendar, if you open this calendar, I don't know if you can see, you will see, like, for me. You see a lot of things that I have planned here, if I do not use my phone to plan out these timings and these activities, I'm gonna miss out on them, no matter how. I feel, I have my time all put together, so what you simply do is, you can start with this, use the phone, create timings there. Put time, okay, time for this, time to go to work, time to sleep, time for that, time for that, and all of those kinds of things, and then set reminders, set alarm, now. When you do this consistently, twenty one days, thirty days, it will naturally form a habit inside of you, and then you have changed. You have changed, now, another way you can do that is to have what you call accountability partners. So who, who are accountability partners, accountability partners are the people that you have given licenses to check. Right, so they check you, they check everything that you do, within the organization, an accountability partner can be the security. To ensure that, I don't, I don't take anything, like, for we in an organization, we ensure, we tell the security, do not take anything. No staff takes anything that does not belong to them out of the organization and all of that, so that puts that particular one in check. Overall, it is the, the wheel, it is the attitude from you deciding to, first of all, and then have accountability partners. Plan your itinerary and all of this, and look at, i- i- not everybody is defaulting in all the areas, no, it might just be one or two areas. So you need to pick those areas where there is a default, right, and address those very specifically, and if you cannot, look for a mentor. Look for a coach, look for someone who has gone that path, Falicia is there, she can help you with things like this, right? I'm also there, you can reach out to me, I can help you, you know, to some of all of that, then you'll be fine, it's something called culture change, and then you would, you will find out that you'll be able to.
Thank you, Zax, um, actually, I, I just, yesterday, I think I did something on, um, I think we need to create more awareness to probably more Africans. To invest in mentorship and coaching, because you really, really need accountability, it's not enough to say, I'm gonna be this, I'm gonna do that. You need the how and someone to really help you, so that's not quite a culture for us, and that's why we kind of stay on the same place for so long, and.
I agree.
Hmm, I think it's time to just have, if you're here and you don't have someone who is mentoring you, someone who is coaching you in different areas of your lives, please, please, just. One thing to leave with is find that person, find that person and, and invest intentionally and, and very formally, I would say. Okay, so there are more questions, Zax, I hope you can still take them, yeah?
Okay, alright, that's fine.
So one asks, one of the ethics is to take orders, but how can we act when we ask to, uh, by our seniors to do something that is not aligned to personal values?
Mm-hmm.
That's from, uh, Nelson.
Nelson, okay, so there is what you call, and I'm happy you asked that question, so there are what you call personal ethics, and there was what you call professional ethics. So personal ethics are the thing you think is right or wrong, based on your moral compass, and then professional ethics. And values are those things that the organization feels it is right, based on its organizational moral compass, now, the thing you need to check is. That thing you're doing, you said is not aligned to your personal value, so you need to check your personal value first of all. Is it, is it something that is wrong or right? Because we all have different definitions of what we call values, so one of my value could be integrity, it does not mean that I do not value hard work. Right, it doesn't mean I don't value other, other things, but I just pick maybe three and say, these are my core values. Like I was making the presentation earlier, I said, you don't take orders on things that is generally acceptable to be wrong. If your senior is telling you to do something that is wrong, it is not about whether it's a personal value, this thing is wrong, is wrong, you can't do that, because you're going to see, not just against yourself, but against your God. For example, let's cheat. If you have a superior who is saying, let's cheat, let's do this, let's cheat, let's rip some clients off, add a little money on top, add something on top for, for boys. There is something called boy's share, right, sorry, I'm using a lot of Nigerian slang for you, this is how we just, this is how these things go around here, so. I- if.
I'm seeing Dambala is.
Yeah, he's feeling it.
Plotting.
Because he understands what I'm trying to say, right, so, boys, so stuff like that, you say, I am sorry, respectfully, so how you decline those kinds of offers? You decline it respectfully, you don't decline it rudely, as you know. All that, why you tell me that kind of thing, die, take your time, no, no, you don't do that, you decline it respectfully, I am sorry, sir, this thing you're asking me to do. Goes against my personal value as a person, as a Christian, as a Muslim, as this or that, thank you very much. It's now left for them to either accept it like that or not, but you have made your stand known, and if they push you and push you to do that thing, then you are in the wrong organization, you are in the wrong setting. You probably need to start looking out for something else.
Thank you so much, Zax, um, Anita, and maybe if I don't elaborate this properly, you can come on board and maybe speak it out. Uh, she says, I want to ask about attendance, is it right to be absent from work if you don't have enough money for work because your salary is small? Now, I don't, I don't know.
No. Anita, you cannot use that as an excuse, now, let me, let me tell you why, no, if the salary is small, then don't accept the job in the first place. There is a contract between you and that organization, you signed, they made an offer to you and said, this is the amount we will pay you. This is the number of days you will work, this is the number of time you will work for, so if you sign it, it means you accepted it like that. So you cannot now come from the back again and start telling us that, I can't, you know, and funny enough, this thing happened just two, I think, one week, two weeks ago. A staff actually told me, one, not, not here, as in, from an organization, that her staff said they were not going to come to work because they don't have transport money. Her staff said they were not going to come to work because they don't have transport money. I'm like. I don't know if you get it, you, you may not have transport money because of some other things, I do understand that right now, the economy everywhere is fighting. And it's almost very easy, there are better ways to solve that issue, you probably might want to meet with your HR supervisor and speak with them. You'll speak with them and let them understand, if it's a work you can do from home, if you can do, but then you can have like a hybrid arrangement. How you are able to present that, no matter, so walk up to your organization, if you feel you're doing more, if you know you're doing a lot. If you know you carry the burden and, and you're doing someone, walk up to them and ask them for a pay increase. And let them understand that, look, if you increase my pay, I'll be better motivated, I'll be, I'll do more, I can deliver more results. And the truth is, if you are a staff that produces results, it should be considered, except you don't produce results. Right, it should be considered, right, but no, that is tantamount to what you call strike action. So that means you want to go on strike, so that means you want to be like a Nigerian government that is saying. They don't want to pay lecturers because they're not a worker, you know, you, you don't want that, so don't do that.
Thank you, thank you so much, I think that is loud and clear. Um, okay, we, we, uh, I'm just gonna give two minutes, two minutes, is that okay, Zax?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, one asks, what if the organization's ethics are not well defined and no specialization?
I don't quite understand that question. Uh, if you see, what if the organization's ethics are not well defined and no specialization? I don't really get that question, how you mean it, are you wanna elaborate a little bit more?
Okay, Sylvester, would you please, um, if you're around and you can probably unmute your mic and elaborate? Um, while I. Quickly, if you can unmute your mic and, and, and just speak up, so I'm, I'm giving you a minute. Okay, so while we are waiting for you, I have one last, um, maybe something that you might, uh, elaborate for us. Uh, Zax, I don't know if it's my network. I think. You, you're frozen, or is it me now? Hello?
I can hear you.
Oh, great, great, we just, yeah, just lost you for a second there. I just wanted to, you to touch on, um, you know, two things, one is. This thing about social media obsession, or I would say, you know, it takes a lot on, 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 on people. Uh, you saw the, the clip, someone is online shopping. Like the, the misuse of, of the time at workplace, because one is on the social media or on the internet. And sometimes you use that being on, online as an excuse that you're working, but actually you're not. So how do you, how do people go around that? And sometimes it can just. Like, take over you, you're not even consciously, and before you know it, it's one hour past and you've wasted time. So, yeah, how do you go about that? And the next thing is, the, how do we encourage going an extra mile? As part of ethics, because most people do the minimum or what is required, they just wanna meet that. But how do we encourage more of an extra mile, is something positive, something to look up to? As, you know, as, 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 as people, you know, workers or. I would say, uh, people in the, in, in career, employees and, and so forth.
Hmm, okay, so, um, the thing is, every time people are distracted from their primary work or their primary assignment. It means their primary assignment or their primary work is not engaging enough, it's not fun enough, or is not fulfilling enough for them. So that's why they are engaging in, in, in something else, in something different, so. At that level, the organization might wanna look critically into the work that people do, are they finding satisfaction from it? Are they finding fulfillment from that work, first of all? Now, that's from the organizational side, and if not, then probably the organization wants to redefine setting concepts or setting job rules, that's on the organization. Now, on the staff. Look, we all have.
Sorry, is it me or?
Now, let me tell you what I, I'm not saying you must do it like this, but this is what works.
I, I, are you guys able to hear, Zax? Oh, okay, I, I guess it's my network.
I can hear you, right? I, I hope everybody else can hear me, so doesn't, I'm not speaking to myself, um, Baraka, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
All right, all right, great, great. So how I handle this is, I normally naturally don't turn on my social media when I'm at work. I don't put on my personal phone's data till maybe somewhat around twelve. When, that's when I turn it on, and there's a reason I do that intentionally, the reason is this. So every individual, ah, how am I gonna do this very fast? Okay, so let me do this in thirty seconds, so every individual has, have what you probably productivity quadrants, right? So the twenty-four hours of every day is divided into four, four groups of six hours, so you have twelve. AM at night to six AM in the morning, six AM to twelve noon, twelve noon to six PM in the evening, six PM to twelve midnight. Every individual has one of these quadrants that you are the most productive in. Is a six hour that is your time of ha- the highest productivity. For me, it is six AM to twelve noon, so everything I do in this time is highly productive. So I don't like other things coming in, jumbling into this time for me, it, it would, it would distract me really, and then I'll lost valuable time. Right, so after twelve o'clock, I can't engage in any other thing, so you wanna create what you call a tiger time. So what is tiger time? Tiger time is the time you would take out from work. For example, maybe one to two, right? Tiger time, you take that one to two time, at that one to two, you have your lunch. You, you can just with staff go around, see some staff, say hi to them, hey, how's work, how's it going and all of that? You can use that time to go through social media and all of that. Yes, it is okay, because we cannot tell you abstain from social, and no, no, it's going to, your social quotient is also gonna be dropping, right? But you allocate time for each of these things. And then you come back to work, after this is your tiger time, you come back to work, and then you keep your phone aside and then focus on the work. Otherwise, you're gonna keep getting, um, distracted out of work. And the second thing you asked, what was the second thing you said?
Um, it was about going an extra mile?
Yes, going an extra mile, right, so for people to go an extra mile, we're, we're individuals, right? Maslow's hierarchy of need said. Um, you're gonna start from people's basic needs, first of all. If an individual is motivated, and this will go more to the company, this path is more to the company, right? If, if you motivate your people very well, if they are appreciated, if they are recognized. If they are happy with their salaries, if they are happy with the work environment, the major factor that will determine why people will be motivated, the culture. That is in that place, if there is a good culture, an environment that helps people to grow. An environment that helps people to be nourished and they can become their best, naturally, people will be, become motivated. People are demoralized when the culture in that place does not help them. Remember what I said when I started, I said. There has to be an alignment between the personal expectation of the employee with the overall general objective of the organization. If there is no alignment, there is no motivation that is gonna happen. If I feel that the work I do is contributing to the greater good of society and the nation, I'll be more motivated to it. Okay, and then finally, motivation is self, self, is you are, you are, you are your greatest motivation for yourself. So a lot of people wake up and you're looking for somebody to motivate me, who motivates me today, let me look, ah, who motivates me today? No, you don't do that, you get up and you motivate yourself, you are your biggest, you are your number one fan. You're your biggest star, you're your biggest credit, so you don't wake up and you are looking, ah, ah, motivates me, say something motivational, let me check for motivational quotes today. You see a hundred of them, but the one that will come from you will be the biggest of all of them, right? So that's, that's, that's what it is, that's what I.
Thank you so much, Zax, and yeah, it has just been amazing and wonderful, um. Having this great time with you and I know we have extended over about twenty minutes. But it's been very engaging and very, um, interesting, I hope, uh, participants have gotten some good, uh, things. Um, okay, so I, I believe at this point, if there'll be any questions, we'll find a way to kind of reach them, um. To, to have them addressed, so please, uh, let's, let's wind up for now, so thank you, everyone, let's give another round of applause. Final, final, and Zax, please, one last word, uh, to us as we close, please.
Okay, thank you so much for this opportunity, Anita is asking a question that is, is catching my fancy. She said, when you face sexual harassment at the office by your senior bosses, what should you do? You should report. You should report, should report it, it's, it's, it's a grave offense, it's, it's a grave offense. It is, it is against every law and policy, that means that person in the office is violating an ethical code of conduct. So you should report it, you know, I'm not saying you should go on social media and go and tweet, that's the part, but. Report it, there's a process within your system, report it to, you know, the board, and if they don't do anything about it. Then you probably want to leave that environment, it's not for you, okay? Thank you, everybody, and I hope that, um, we are going to be the best in our career, remember. Growth, learning, learning never stops, learning never stops, you just keep learning, you keep knowing, you keep knowing, you keep knowing day by day by day. And then you grow, look for mentors, look for coaches, look for people that are. You know, that have gone ahead and then they will help you, and before I do, I really want to appreciate my friend, my fellow colleague, coach Joy, she's here. Joy Beneshu, she's also a coach, she's joining in from the UK, then she came into this session because of me, Joy, hello, thank you for joining. And my HR colleague Jerry is also here.
Oh, great. Welcome you all. It was great to have you and everybody who has met time, so thank you so much, Zax, uh, I hope, you know. People will put this into, into practice and, and see how that will, you know, will, will affect their career and life in general. So have a great time and looking forward to meet some of you on Saturday as we are having our next session on career and entrepreneurship, do not miss, same time. Have a great time and stay well, stay safe, bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you, bye, everybody.